I'd like to call the Public Works Committee meeting to order. Roll call, please.
Alderman Wesley.
Here.
Alderman Police.
Here.
Alderman Lewitan.
Here.
Alderman Shockey.
Here.
Alderman Caddella.
Here.
Alderman Winger. Alderman Coles.
Here.
Alderman Knype.
Okay, next item, approval of minutes of special meeting, October 16th, 2008. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? One excused. Eugene.
Wasn't here.
Next item is report and recommendation, treatment plant consultant interviews. First up, we have three gentlemen from Baxter and Woodman, Mr. Carl Fisher, Mr. Daryl Gale, and Andrew Zellettel. I'm sorry, Dave, did you want some, you want to say something, or are we good to go? I'm sorry.
Yeah, I think we're good to go. Just to recap, we're interviewing the three firms, compliment proposals last week, Baxter and Woodman first, and then, and then the SEC.
Would they, would you gentlemen like to sit at the table, be on the hot seat?
Actually, we prefer it here.
Okay.
If you don't mind, sir.
No problem.
Great, thank you. All right. First of all, we're happy to be here. My name is Daryl Goveley. It's an old Norwegian name, and so it's kind of hard to pronounce sometimes, but I'm the president and CEO of Baxter and Woodman, have been in that position for about nine years. With me today is Andrew, or Andy, we always call him Andy, Zellettel, he's our, your client contact, you've all met him, you've all probably seen him before numerous times. And also with me tonight is Carl Fisher. He would be the project manager for your project, so he is actually one of our top experts on water and wastewater, conveyance and treatment, and so we are bringing to you our A-team, if you will, tonight. I'm going to turn the presentation over to Carl now to go through some of the details, and then later on, I'll come back and kind of wrap up the conversation, open it up to questions and answers.
Carl?
Thanks, Daryl. As a native son, one who was born and raised here in Wooddale, I know how important this decision is to you, and to the residents, and to the businesses here in Wooddale. I want to see you have the wherewithal to make the city be what you want it to be, that is to fulfill your vision for the city. And the last thing you need is to be overburdened by the cost and debt of wastewater treatment. So our assignment is to give you the information that you need to make good decisions, to find the most economical way to provide wastewater treatment for the growth that you're expecting from the O'Hare Western Expansion Project, Western Access Project, and other development and redevelopment. Okay, this project is the evaluation of your two existing treatment plants. Your scope for, from your request for qualifications was very clear. You want us to determine what is the, what it will take to expand the two existing treatment plants to a combined capacity of 5 million gallons a day. Now, as you know, we have already prepared the site assessment and feasibility study for the new site, so this is the second step in the overall planning process, is to evaluate the existing treatment plants. Now, once you have that information combined with our first report, you'll be able to compare the alternatives, and I suggest that you also look at your funding options at that point, and then the city council needs to decide which of those is your preference. Once you have made that decision, you could continue in the planning process. The next step is the facility plan, the preparation of the facility plan, and if you choose to pursue funding from the Illinois Environmental Protection Agency Water Pollution Control Loan Program, then you may also have to prepare a sewer system evaluation survey, but that's only if you're going to pursue funding with them. Also, you will need to apply for an MPDS permit app, you'll have to apply for an MPDS permit. You, what you're doing is you want to expand your existing plants. In other words, you're asking for permission to increase the amount of wastewater treatment plant effluent that you discharged to Salt Creek. Therefore, you have to apply for a permit modification. And then, of course, you'll have to apply for an amendment to the Illinois Water Quality Management Plan. Oops, other way. Now, before we get into the details of this project, I'd like to take a step back and kind of take an overview of the whole situation here. And this is a complex situation, and whenever I'm facing a complex problem, I like to break it down into smaller pieces, things that I can chew and digest better. So what I would like to do is break this down into these elements, and then kind of walk you, walk you through this. The objective here is to give you a, just so we're all operating on the same page, that we're all on the same page with this. Here are the alternatives, excuse me, this is, this is the, the elements that I broke the situation down to, the alternatives that you face, what, what could be your goals for the project, the steps that are necessary to achieve those goals. We can't ignore the impact of regulations, we're going to take a look at that. And then, I'm going to look at this project, which is the assessment of your existing plants. Okay, so there's, there's two basic alternatives that you've already identified, and then number one is to expand your two existing plants, and the second is to demolish those two existing plants and build a new plant. Now, this kind of reminds me of where I was back in 1978. I had one child and was expecting another, and I was living in a two-bedroom house, so I was, I was faced with the decision, do I add on to my existing house? Do I buy a bigger house? Do I build a bigger house? And that's, I see you being in the same situation here. You need to expand, do you add on to your existing plants? Do you build new? What do you do? So these are two, two alternatives that you've already identified. Now, there is a few others that you may want to consider, and that's totally your choice, city council's choice, is you could keep your two existing treatment plants, make the improvements that are necessary to keep them into compliance with regulations, and then add a third plant to take, to provide adequate capacity for your growth. Another option is to offload a portion or all of your wastewater to a neighboring community. You'll remember that in the site assessment and feasibility study that we did for you for the new plant, we did talk to Addison at that time, and Addison said, yes, we would be willing to take some or all of your flow, and depending on how much you wanted us to take, we could expand the north plant. So that is something that they would be willing to consider if that's a route that the city of Wooddale would like to pursue. Another possibility is the reduction in infiltration inflow. We have been working with the village of Itasca for over 15 years on sewer rehabilitation, and from that effort, we have significantly reduced the amount of infiltration inflow coming into their sanitary sewer system. Back in 1996, their average daily flow was 2.4 million gallons a day. By 2006, 10 years later, we had reduced that average daily flow to 1.9 MGD. That was a savings of 0.5 MGD. Now, if the city of Wooddale could do something similar to that, then perhaps they wouldn't have to expand the plants, or at least have a lesser expansion of them. All right, let's take a look at, at goals. What is, what are, what are your goals for this project? Well, here's some that, that could be your goals, I'm not sure, but first and foremost, what's the purpose of wastewater treatment? To safeguard public health and protect the environment, so that's certainly a goal. But, you know, if I'm a resident, my goal is, I don't want to see it, I don't want to smell it, I just want to know that it's doing its job, that there's adequate capacity for growth, so it doesn't hinder development, that keeps business coming to my city, that I'm, that my basement isn't flooding, and that it's protecting the environment, there's no effluent violations, we're doing our thing for the environment. And then, bottom line is, it's at a reasonable cost, it's got to be affordable to me. So those would be some of my goals, I'm sure that you might have other goals for the project. Now, what are the steps that you need to do to take, to reach those goals? Well, here they are. The first step is planning, and you're already into that. The next, after you're done with planning, the next thing you need is, you need to get approvals, first from the Chicago Metropolitan, Metropolitan Agency for Planning, CMAP. They need to approve your facility plan and your amendment to the Water Quality Management Plan. Once that's done, then you ask Illinois Environmental Protection Agency for its approval of the facility plan. Once you have those approvals, then you can proceed with the design, get your IEPA construction permit and bidding. Now, if you're going to pursue a loan from the Water Pollution Control Loan Program, you have to get the IEPA official loan offer prior to starting construction. Those are the basic steps in, to achieve your goal. Now, these are, these are the tasks under the planning step, and you've seen this slide before, I showed it to you a little, little bit ago, but again, the two, the two jobs, the one that's done already, and now this one, evaluating the existing treatment plants, that'll give you the information you need to make your decision on what your preference Now, we can't forget the impact of regulations. There are current regulations that you're going to have to comply with, you have no choice, but there are some regulations that are on the horizon, and we need to know from you how you want to handle those. Do you want to take measures now to meet those, or do you want to wait until they become required? Now, this is an important question, because to comply with some of these regulations can be very expensive if you try and do it later, but if you try and do it now, it's less expensive because of the way that we handle things during an expansion, and that'll become obvious in a second. All right, let's talk about the ones that are required right now. The first one is the interim phosphorus rule. When you go to expand your treatment plants, the interim phosphorus rule says that you must then provide phosphorus removal, you must comply with a phosphorus effluent limit of 1.0 milligrams per liter. So when you expand your wastewater treatment plants, you're going to have to add phosphorus removal to them. Now, you should also know that the Illinois EPA is currently in the process of producing nutrient water quality standards. Nutrients are nitrogen and phosphorus. Their proposal right now is to lower that 1.0 milligram per liter phosphorus concentration effluent limit down to 0.3 milligrams per liter. That is being contested by several people, but if that were to hold, you would, you would most likely have to add filtration to your wastewater treatment process, and that would be very expensive. Baxter and Woodman has been hired by the Illinois Association of Wastewater Agencies to prepare their case against that 0.3 milligram per liter phosphorus limit, and so far, we have written two papers on that for IAWA, but we're just going to have to see where that, that proceeds. So that's, you have to be aware of that, that that could increase your cost if that 0.3 milligram per liter effluent limit came into being. The next thing you have to do is you have to apply for a modification of your MPDS permit, I mentioned that earlier, but when you do that, then you have to comply with the 2002 anti-degradation rules. And what those rules require is that you prepare the documentation, all the data that IEPA needs for its analysis. IEPA does the analysis, you don't, but you've got to provide all the documentation. In Itasca, the way we handled that is we, we, the village, the village chose to work with the stakeholders upfront, and Brad can testify to what a long, arduous task that was to work with them, but in the end, we developed a mutually acceptable plan for, in this case, building a new wastewater treatment plant for the village of Itasca. Now, again, it's totally your choice on what you want to do. You can choose to work with them like Itasca did at the front end, or you can choose to ignore them, prepare your plan, submit it, and then when it comes time to apply for your NPDS permit, then the public has the right to file an objection and ask for a public hearing. If they do that, that can cost the city a significant sum of money for attorney's fees, additional engineering fees, staff's time, expenses. The village of Itasca chose not to do it that way. You have a choice, it's up to you, we work with you either way you choose. The next thing is the DuPage County Stormwater Permit. Now, you're a fully, full waiver community, correct? All right, so you don't have to get a DuPage County Stormwater Permit, but when you, as a full waiver community, when you essentially do a project on your own, you are still responsible for complying with the regulation, and you have the obligation to prove to DuPage County that you are, in fact, following those rules. Now, in Itasca, with our new treatment plant, this has become, I guess I'd use the word We're adding a lot of impervious area with our new treatment plant, just as you would in expanding your existing plants. That means that we have to provide additional stormwater detention. We also have wetlands to mitigate, and we have some, some flood planes that we're filling, and we have to provide compensatory storage. So all those things have taken a long time and a lot of work already, and we're about six months into the design. So just be aware of that, those are the regulations that you have to comply with at this stage. Now, the ones that are out there on the horizon that you have to watch, again, are the nutrient water quality standards. As I said, the nutrients are nitrogen and phosphorus. Phosphorus, you have no choice, you've got to, you've got to remove that, but with nitrogen, right now, the Illinois EPA is leaning towards no nitrogen limit, but that doesn't mean that they, they won't change that attitude and ask you for one. But you may want to go ahead and put in the system to remove nitrogen anyway, and there's a couple of reasons for that. First of all, the environmental advocacy groups are promoting the removal of nitrogen at wastewater treatment plants, so to gain their support, if that's what you're after, to make your, your application go smoother through EPA, that, that would be a concession you could make and remove nitrogen. But the second reason for it is that it offers some real benefits in the wastewater process. And I'm not going to go into all the technical details about it, but first of all, if you, if you remove nitrogen, it does reduce the amount of air that's required, which translates into lower electric bills, okay? The second thing is that it adds back alkalinity, which helps the biological process, I won't go into the details behind that. So that's one of those instances where I talked about earlier, that even though the regulation doesn't require it at this time, you as a council may want to choose to do that now. Let's talk about biosolids. In Illin, well, in the United States, there's three classes of biosolids, A, B, and C. Currently, you produce Class B biosolids, you dispose of that through land application, applying it to farmland. That, those biosolids are incorporated into the soil and, and do some additional stabilization in the soil, okay? Class A biosolids are stabilized at the plant to the point where they're safe enough to distribute directly to the public for use on their lawns, for landscapers, it can be, it can be safely distributed to anybody. Now, IEPA had, back in 2001, had predicted that it would become mandatory across the country to produce Class A biosolids by 2006. Well, 2006 has come and gone, and we don't have any requirement to produce Class A biosolids, okay? So, in your case, you're going to be expanding your plants. You should be aware that this possibly could come. When it's going to come? I don't know, I can't tell you. If it makes sense at this time to put in a Class A biosolids treatment system, then I would suggest you do it. If it doesn't make sense for you, and it all depends on the plants and how we expand them, then I would suggest you don't. In Itasca, we chose to do that right now. We're designing a Class A biosolid system. In Bloomingdale, we just, we're just finishing the construction of Phase 1, which is the biosolid system, and there, we are not putting the Class A system in, at this phase. We have postponed that to the third phase, which is scheduled approximately 2015, and we, and I know the village will not do that if that regulation is not in place at that time. Next one is the sanitary sewer overflow rule, and what impacts you and the treatment plants in this rule is the way it handles excess flow. Right now, your two wastewater treatment plants have excess, excess flow treatment facilities. The philosophy behind the sanitary sewer overflow rule is, hey, if your pipes, pipes leak, then plug your pipes, and if you plug your pipes, you won't have excess flow, therefore, you wouldn't need excess flow treatment, right? Makes sense. Except they don't, they overlook the cost to plug the leaks, that's what they're not looking at. Anyway, the excess, or the sanitary sewer overflow rule seems to imply that excess flow treatment will become prohibited after a period of time. Now, certainly, there's great debate over that, over the entire country, and so who knows where that's going to wind up? So our recommendation to you is, this, this overflow rule has been on the horizon for several years, I wouldn't do a thing if I were the city of Wooddale, I'd just leave it alone until something happens with that rule or it goes away completely. All right, so let's talk about this project. I mean, we've already looked at, we looked at the alternatives that you have available to you, we've looked at the, at potential goals that you could set for the project, and we've also looked at the steps necessary to attain those goals, to achieve those goals, and we looked at the, the impact that the regulations would have. So let's take a look at, at your project, the one that you've sent the request for qualifications out for, and that is the assessment of the existing plants to treat a total of 5 MGD, okay? And I put that in there as, as the first bullet, because eventually, you're going to have to confirm that 5 million gallons per day is the right number, and that is important because right now, your, your combined capacity is 3.1 MGD, all right? Now, let's, let's say that your north plant, let's just, just pick some numbers, and let's say that you could easily expand it to 4 MGD. I don't know if that's true, I'm just picking a number, but let's say it would be easy to expand it to 4 million gallons a day, but to go to 5, you would have to acquire more land. You may have to condemn a piece of property that's right next to the plant and tear down what's on there now and expand. But then, if you did your analysis and determined that, hey, we don't need 5 MGD, we really only need 4, okay? Now, after this report, which is going to say, here's what you need to do for 5 MGD, the city council is going to make their decision based on those reports, if really you only needed 4 MGD, then that decision might have been, might have been swayed and might have gone the other way, don't know that, but that's important, consider that. But we did our, remember, we did our site assessment and feasibility study for the new plant based on 5 MGD, and so appropriately, you've asked for this study of the existing facilities to also use the same 5 MGD number so that you can have an apples-to-apples comparison, and so that's smart. But eventually, you're going to have to look at that 5 MGD number and confirm, is that really the flow that you, that's going to be expected from the city once, once it's completely built out and redeveloped? All right, then the next question that you have to answer is, are the existing plants expandable? All right, now, what do we need to do to answer that question? Well, we need to assess each and every treatment process. Are we going to save it? Are we going to demolish it? Are we going to modify it in any way? We've got to know whether, first of all, does it need any repairs and can it be repaired? Are the parts available? Can it be replaced if it needs to be replaced? How about modifications? What modifications are needed, and does it need to be enlarged? And this is where Dave and Brad and his staff, it's absolutely imperative that we have their, their assistance in this, because nobody knows your treatment plants better than your staff. I mean, they live with them day in, day out, and we really value their experience. For example, you have a screen at your north plant, it's called a step screen. I've had fairly good experience with, with the step screens, but in this particular application, it has not worked well for the city of Wooddale. Now, if I hadn't talked to Brad and already known this, I would walk in and you would tell me, I have a step screen. I'd say, oh, good, that sounds like a good product. But Brad, if I talked to him, I find out, no, it has not been good, it has been a problem, and it needs to be addressed in this study. So that's why we, we work together with your staff to find out these things, that we know exactly what, what's going on at the plant. We also need to know how the systems are performing. Do we need to improve performance or restore performance if it has dropped off? Is there some improvements that we need to make that could possibly reduce electric bills? We just finished a job for Downers Grove Sanitary District where we added one new blower. This blower has frictionless bearings, it uses magnetic levitation, the shaft of the blower essentially floats in a magnet, magnetic field, frictionless, it's much more efficient. By adding that blower and running that as their primary blower, and making other improvements to their aeration system, they have lowered their, or cut their electric bills by a third. Now, as I understand it, your electric bills are roughly $12,000 a month. If you could achieve similar results, think about that, that would be a savings of $4,000 a month just on the electric at the wastewater treatment plant. At Downers Grove, the payback is estimated to be less than five years for the system. Next thing that we have to look at is expansion, and of course, we have to look at each, each process, see if it's expandable, and how that, how that process would be expanded. Again, we have to look at what new processes are required at the treatment plant. Well, we already know one, and that's phosphorus removal, that's got to be added. Once we know what of the existing equipment can be saved, what has to be expanded, what new processes need to be added, we put that all together, lay it out, we got to find out if it fits on the site, and once, you know, maybe we can shoehorn it in there to get it to fit, but will it, is it workable, or is it too cramped? And again, working with staff, we get their input to find out what they think of the layout, how they think it would work for them. And then I have to really commend you on your request for qualifications for including this next bullet. Many people don't think about this, but in this study, it's going to be imperative. Your, your treatment plant sites are so small and confined that, yes, we might be able to shoehorn new stuff in there, but the question is, can we keep the existing plants operational during construction? It's mandatory, it's a requirement by Illinois EPA, you have to be fully operational during construction. And so, again, working with your staff closely, we're going to be looking at that and coming up with a strategy on how to operate that as it is constructed. We, I just finished a project, it's going to start construction, we had the pre-construction conference on October 16th in Marcellus, and there, we had a, a very small site, again, and we're doing a lot of work on a lot of different treatment systems, and we worked out a plan to, to temporarily take their raw sewage pump station, their grit system, their primary clarifiers and primary effluent pumps out of service by temporarily pumping directly to the aeration tanks. They had extra aeration tank capacity, and therefore, they had the ability to leave the primary clarifiers offline for an extended period of time. These are the things that we have to talk to your staff about to see what is possible. Again, nobody knows your plants better than your staff. And the last thing that I wanted to mention here is green concepts. I just spent the last three days at WEFTEC, which is the International Wastewater Conference that was in Chicago, I don't know if you heard about it, but Mayor Daley did speak, he was the keynote speaker at the conference, and he let it be known that his goal is to make Chicago the greenest city in the United States. And throughout the entire conference, there were many technical sessions on green concepts. So the question I really have for you as a city council that, that you need to decide is, how green do you want to be? You know, what aspects do you want to put into these treatment plants that would green it up? Do you want to put a garden on a roof? You know, what, what are those things? And are you willing, as a council, to pay the extra money, the extra costs that some of these green concepts might, might cost? of these green concepts might, might cost? Well, after, after you go through the, this project, evaluating the existing treatment plants, then it's decision time for you. You'll have that, the results of that work. You have the results from our previous study, so it's time to compare the alternatives and make your decision on what is your preference. Once you do that, then you can finish the rest of the planning by going through the facility planning process. So in summary, what, what I described for you tonight was the alternatives, some possible alternatives that you can look at, some goals that you could set, the steps that you need to take to achieve those goals, the impact of those regulations, and then finally, we discussed the project itself and the assessment of those existing plants. So that's kind of the technical side of, of our presentation. I'll let Darryl wrap it up.
Thank you, Carl. Just got a couple more slides here and then open it up to Q and A. I want to talk a little bit about the benefits that we, we believe that you'll receive by selecting Baxter and Woodman for this assignment. The first one is going to talk some about, about our involvement with you during this process. We believe strongly in involving the client in the process to make sure that you're, that you understand what the alternatives are, that you understand what the choices are, and what the choices of ramifications are. Carl went through some of those in the slides and talked before about information we will need from the city as we proceed with the second assignment. Next bullet is project team. I think that you have to be impressed with Carl Fisher's knowledge and experience. He is our top guy, as I said earlier, but he's backed up by others in the company. We are very, very proud of our wastewater treatment plant expertise. We're considered one of the regional experts. Carl talked about the, the recent Water Environment Federation Congress, which was in, in Chicago. It's a training session, as much as anything else, and conference attendees go to different sessions where experts speak about different aspects of wastewater treatment, wastewater conveyance. We had four separate speakers in the education program, different people from our company who were, who won, if you will, in a competitive type of selection process based upon the quality of the information that was to be provided to the, to the attendees. So it's not just Carl. In fact, there's a, there's a large number of people that are very experienced in wastewater. This is one of our core business models. We've been in this business for 60 years. Project manager with vested interest in his own hometown, obviously, talked earlier about being born and raised here in Wooddale. And we provide you with a plan necessary for, to make you, to make the decisions. That's our goal. The decisions are yours to make, not ours to make. So I'm going to talk a little bit about us again. We are the only firm that's obtained approval to expand a plant on Salt Creek. It's difficult now to get permission from the agencies to expand a wastewater treatment plant. They're very careful about what is going to be discharged into these high-quality water streams. And the environmental advocacy groups, which are those, have oversight capability and the capability to make the process very time-consuming and very expensive for an applicant. Now, we have strong relationships with the EAGs, but we listen to our client as to what level of, of cooperation, what level of negotiation will be done with the environmental advocacy groups. They do hold a lot of the cards when it goes to some of the subsequent meetings that'll be necessary and the subsequent permissions and permits that'll be given. One of them is regarding CMAP, Chicago Metropolitan Area Agency for Planning, which is the old NIPSY, was taken over by CMAP. They are an organization that is empowered by the state to do review of the facility planning reports and the National Pollution Discharge Elimination System permits, and they can be a hurdle. Illinois EPA can also be a hurdle. And they listen very closely to the environmental advocacy groups because there was a recent decision that gave more weight, more authority to the EAGs. And we are recognized wastewater experts. We are very proud of our, our reputation. We guard it jealously. We like to believe that we have some of the best wastewater treatment plant personnel and experts. And with that, I would like to open it up to questions and answers, and then I would like to close with just a final closing statement, if I may. So I know, I, I open up questions and answers to my staff occasionally when I'm making presentations, and I, I talk about a 30-second rule. You ever heard the 30-second rule? Yeah. The 30-second rule is, if you don't want to have questions, you say, all right, I'm opening up for questions and answers, and you wait about 10 seconds, and you say, well, thank you, because it takes about 30 seconds for most people to be able to formulate a question and be able to put it out there. So I'll, I'll be quiet for about 30 seconds in case you guys want to come up with a question or two for either Carl or myself.
Anybody want to ask a question? Alderman Wesley?
I have a couple here. The, you said back in, in that there was loans available, providing that we did a sewer study and all that in the presentation.
That's correct.
We have completed sewer study, I believe, already. Am I correct?
We did a sanitary.
Need to go to the microphone.
We started a sanitary sewer evaluation back in 1999, I believe, and we continued that on through about 2004. From then on, we've been televising and flushing our sewer lines, but I don't believe we've been making any sewer repairs since then.
No, but you saying, on the grant, you said a study of sewer lines. Am I correct?
Yes. What I, what I said was that depending on how bad your pipes, your sewers leak, you may have to do a sewer system evaluation survey. What is required in the facility planning process is that you determine whether or not your infiltration and inflow is excessive. And the definition of excessive is this: if it is less expensive to rehabilitate the sewer and eliminate those leaks than it is to transport and treat that wastewater, that infiltration inflow, then you must rehabilitate your sewer.
Okay.
So it's, so it's identification, quantification, and then cost-effective analysis to decide whether or not you need to fix it or not. And, and then that's, that's the key. It's a, it's a multi, like, all of this stuff is a multi-step process. Nothing is one jump, big giant jump. So, so that's the necessary requirement to prove that you don't have infiltration inflow that's easier to take out of the system than it is to continue to transport and treat. Nobody can take out all of the infiltration inflow. It's, it's just impossible. We have done studies in other communities. In a study in Downers Grove, we fixed everything, and we couldn't take it out. It would gradually seep into the sewer. It wasn't the big rush that comes on in a rainstorm. It was a general seepage into the, and it's impossible to take it all out. So nobody, nobody expects you to have a sewer that's watertight. But they expect you to fix the big leaks because they don't want to pay for building a treatment plant with a capacity to treat those big leaks.
Okay. I do have a couple more, but if you want to ask the council.
Anybody else? Mayor?
I take it the RFQ specified the 5 million to the 10 million gallons per day peak?
That's correct.
We're at, I think, 13,450, and according to the old NIPSY, we were going to go up to about 17,000 within the next 20 years, assuming western access and assuming we had 500 additional hotel rooms and we had five restaurants. It's just ballpark for me. What, a town of 17,000 with a total of 700 hotel rooms, what size plant do we need?
Well, okay, a, a town of 17,000, first of all, would require about 1.7 million gallons per day, and you're going to throw your commercial and industrial loads on there. And Mayor, quite frankly, I don't know beyond the, the 500 hotel rooms and the, and the, what did you say, five restaurants? I couldn't give you off the top of my head what that would be, but for example, Itasca has 32,000 jobs. That's what, what we have in there. And we estimate that each one of those jobs would produce about 0.15 population equivalent or 15 gallons per day of wastewater flow. So what is that? 32,000 is 320,000 and a half. Again, 480,000 gallons a day, 0.48 MGD. All right? I would certainly expect that Wooddale, being approximately the same size area of commercial and industrial area, would probably have at least that. So, so what did I say? 1.7 MGD for population, another half MGD for commercial and industrial flow. You're up to 2.2. Rest is infiltration inflow?
Yeah. Alderman Caddala?
Well, picking up with where the mayor left off, considering that right now, we are only a, a town of, I think, less than 14,000 people, and I think, Brad, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but our current capacity is just at or slightly over 3 MGD?
Combined plants are 3.1, yes.
Okay. And you have an awareness of our, of our commercial sector. Is it your opinion that your, if you're, you're chosen as the consultant, that, that your study should include a, a pretty strong and good look at the, at the conveyance system? I mean, at, at this point, is it, is it your assumption or guess, or, or does your knowledge believe you, make you believe that our I and I is excessive at this point? I'm not going to hold you to it, and you talked about it's excessive when the cost factor is there, but considering what our capacity is and, and that we do, we do seem to reach it in, in, you know, in storm events, do you think we have a problem in the conveyance system?
Brad, what is your, what's your average daily flow right now?
It's about 1.8 MGD at the north plant.
Average, average daily flow is 1.8 at the north. What is it at the south?
About 0.5.
0.5. So combined, it's about 2.3.
Correct.
And you have a community that's approximately 14,000 people and a commercial industrial area. You know, I said, I said that would be about a half MGD. So you put those two together, you're, you should be like 1.9 MGD, which means that your infiltration inflow is averaging about 0.5 MGD, something like that? Okay. I got a better question for you. Do you know what, how much water you sell to your commercial and industrial customers?
Brad? That I don't know.
Yeah. Putting him on the spot. How you like that, huh? So to answer your question, I think it's a component that, that should be looked at under this particular study. I'm not so sure that's, that's as necessary. I, I would think that you would want to look at that 5 MGD flow rate and maybe give, get a better projection on that.
Alderman Lewitin?
Let me, let me direct the, let me direct this question to Brad Gilman, and then you can bounce it over to the team players over to our right. Do we now, have we ever, is it feasible to discharge water?